Good evening, I'd like to call the order. The business meeting for the Tacoma School District Board of Directors, Thursday, December 12th, 2019. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General Counsel, would you please call the roll?
President Hines.
Here.
Director Cobb.
Here.
Director Baumbruch.
Here.
And is Director Leon excused?
He is.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number four, adoption of the agenda, or is there a motion?
I move the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. One of the more exciting meetings that we get to have, we get to swear in a new board member this evening. Lisa Keating was elected to Director, position number one, and she will take her oath of office. Lisa, I'd like to invite you and any of your family or friends that are going to participate to the podium.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Lisa Keating.
Aye, Lisa Keating.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I...
Do hereby solemnly swear that...
I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Washington...
And the Constitution of the State of Washington...
And will faithfully discharge the duties of...
And will faithfully discharge the duties of...
Director of Tacoma School District Number 10...
Director of Tacoma School District Number 10...
Pierce County State of Washington...
Pierce County State of Washington...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
[laughing]
Exciting times.
Director Keating, will you please join us at the dais?
Welcome, congratulations. Thank you.
Would you like an opportunity to introduce people, or thank people, or introduce and thank people?
Sure, is this on?
It's on.
It's on, fabulous. So, I just want to thank my family. My daughter Stella, and my husband Dimitri, and my mother-in-law Kay are here. The last nine months have been an extraordinary journey, and we survived. And we survived some significant challenges, family-wide, and we actually came together and became stronger as a result. My blood pressure didn't actually benefit from the last nine months, but I just know that I'm sitting here because there's many in this room that helped me get here, and I couldn't have done any of this and be able to serve our community and our students without all of you, so I just want to say thank you. And it's a true, true honor to be sitting up here and just be in service, so I'm truly grateful, so thank you.
Welcome, and on behalf of the board, I know we are all looking forward to serving with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number six, board reorganization. Board reorganization and election of officers. The Board of Directors will proceed with the annual organizational meeting pursuant to Policy 1210 as follows. A call for nominations for President to serve during the ensuing year, election of a President to serve during the ensuing year, roll call vote, assumptions of the office by the new President, call for nominations for Vice President to serve during the ensuing year, election of Vice President via a roll call vote. Are there any nominations for President?
I nominate Scott Hines to be President for the ensuing year.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. General Counsel, roll call vote.
Director Cobb?
Oh, aye.
Director Baumbruch?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
And Director Hines?
Aye.
Now President Hines.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate the honor to get to serve as President. Next, we will take nominations for Vice President. I'd like to nominate Director Cobb.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
President Hines?
Aye.
Director Cobb?
Aye.
Director Baumbruch?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Congratulations, Vice President Cobb.
And we don't have to move, we're all... Sometimes we have to rearrange chairs, but we can just roll right into the agenda. Item number seven, recognition of staff, students, and communities. 7.1, recognition of communities and schools of Tacoma as a national winner of the Innovation Challenge.
Good evening, President Hines and members of the board. Communities and Schools is a national organization that serves and supports at-risk students to help them stay in and succeed in school, and the organization's local affiliates serve approximately 2,300 schools in 25 states. And we're blessed here in Tacoma to have a key partner in Communities and Schools Tacoma, working inside many of our schools, connecting kids to caring adults and community resources. This year, the national organization posed what it called "an innovation challenge" to all of its local branches, and four innovations, including one created right here in Tacoma, won national honors, and let me explain what happened here. As you're aware, many of those who serve our neediest student populations often find it challenging not to take their work home with them. And at the end of the day, sometimes even the adults can get stressed out and easily succumb to that strain and pressure of trying to help the students. So a while back, the local Communities and Schools staff joined with the faculty at Oakland High School in a positive mindfulness training in which 100% of the participants reported reduced stress and improved overall mental health. That experience motivated Taylor Parton, the Communities and Schools site coordinator at Gray Middle School, and her colleagues to come up with the mindfulness practices entry for the Innovation Challenge. The national organization was so impressed that they have not only just selected our Tacoma chapter as an award winner, but they will roll out mindfulness training practices to all of their affiliates nationwide. So on behalf of Tacoma Public Schools, I'm pleased to present to you tonight our local Communities and Schools Executive Director Teresa Maxwell and our Innovator of the Year, Taylor Parton.
Thank you, thank you so much. Well, thank you for honoring us tonight. It's really a pleasure to be in Tacoma Public Schools, and the partnership that we've enjoyed over the years, it's priceless. We worked with all of the different departments here, and it couldn't be a better fit for us. This innovative challenge, when it came about, we asked our staff, what do you guys want to do, and we've been practicing the mindfulness classes for the last couple of years, and actually, Mr. Jones over at Oakland, after we did one series of mindfulness training over there, he actually, right before school, asked us to come back and do another one. And after that training, the staff were saying, oh, we want our kids to get credit for this, we want, you know, to incorporate this into our own school climate. And now, our site coordinator over there actually does lead in some mindfulness practices in the morning. So, we were just honored. Taylor has done a remarkable job, you know, it's a team effort, but she made that winning pitch down in Chicago, and we're really excited, I was there for that. And it's really exciting to be working with CIS National on a national level to roll out what this might look like. So in the next year, we'll be working with them and developing some kind of online curriculum that other communities and schools across the country can use. But I want to thank Taylor for being there and the work that she's doing, she's very passionate about making sure that the kids get the resources that they need, because especially this time of year, you know, adults and kids alike, you know, we all sometimes can get stressed, so making sure that you have these mindfulness practices in your back pocket, and you can pull them out and use them when you need it, it really makes your day go by a lot easier. Taylor, go ahead and kind of share a little bit about your experience.
Yeah, so can everybody hear me? I have a pretty loud voice, that's never been an issue, so. So we came up with this mindfulness curriculum, and it's going to be broken up into eight different parts that are going to be centered around main mindfulness practices such as appreciative joy, gratitude, reframing, just really simple things that we can all do in our daily lives. But what's really cool about it is it actually helps to weaken the part of the brain that's responsible for reacting and strengthens the parts that are responsible for learning, forming new memories, and responding and taking that extra moment before we blurt it out. And so, yeah, it's been a really cool series to work on as a team. We saw this need, we all feel this strain, especially around this time of year. It's hard for us to leave our kids, I'm working with like 45 kids already at Gray, and it's looking like we're going to have about 100, and knowing that that's 100 kids that need help over the break, they come to me for food daily, and so I'm like, where are they going to go for two and a half weeks? Who's going to make sure they have somebody checking on their math grades? I don't want that backslide in two and a half weeks. So, I know if I'm feeling this way, then the teachers who are working with them daily are feeling this way, my fellow site coordinators are feeling this way, so by creating this series, we're hoping to just reduce that burnout and keep a little bit of positivity and joy and hope in our schools, so thanks, guys.
Teresa and Taylor, would you please come up so we can congratulate you?
I'm always proud of the work that happens in Tacoma, but I'm especially proud of Communities and Schools of Tacoma. Prior to joining the board, spent almost 10 years on that board and was able to serve a couple of terms as President, and it's just a testament to the value of partnership in Tacoma, where taking care of every student every day and 30,000 kids is an awesome responsibility, and we cannot do it alone. So thank you to Communities and Schools, and thank you as part of the Tacoma Whole Educator Initiative, trying to make certain that, not only thinking about the kids, but those staff members that are in the buildings with them every day as well, and partners. So congratulations and thank you for all of your important work. Item 7.2, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Chelsea McElroy.
More partnerships, my love language. Good evening, Board of Directors. My name is Amanda Scott Thomas, I'm the Director of the Community Partnership Office, and we are going to be doing two recognitions. We didn't do one in November, so we're going to do November and December tonight. So we're going to start off with our first Gold Star recipient for the month of November. As you know, the Tacoma Public Schools, we define partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting the student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. So when it comes to students' success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone, and in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. So first, we have Coach Chelseaa, who was born and raised in Tacoma's North End community. She was raised in a multi-generational home by her mother and grandparents, she is one of four children. Throughout middle school, she was interested in the art of poetry and spoken word, and in high school, while attending Bellman Prep, her love of the arts was actualized when she became the co-captain of the school's step team. Soon after, she took over most of the choreographic duties on the team. She is filled with love, light, and determination, and Coach Chelseaa attended Marquette University on a pre-med biochemistry track before redirecting her life to pursue an education in early childhood education at Bates Technical College. Coach Chelseaa has a degree in early childhood education with a specialization in school-age care and child development birth throughout adolescence. She's worked in a multitude of early learning positions and previously served as an E-CAP Family Associate at Bowles Elementary School. While working at Bowles and the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound, the Eastside Branch, she realized that giving back meant creating a real community for children in her care. From this place, Vision Step Team was born. She visions the step team striving to do new and interesting things under her tutelage and considers herself lucky to be able to pursue her passion for working with girls in Tacoma. Vision Step Team is a girls' empowerment group that focuses on self-sufficiency, health and nutrition, self-love and acceptance, and shows them how to navigate the world as self-sufficient young women. This team was founded with the intent to inspire girls to aspire to greatness. Focused on emotional support and planting the seeds for a strong foundation early in life is something Coach Chelseaa is truly passionate about. It is a goal of hers to serve girls from Tacoma and in their neighborhoods and give them a platform to ensure that their voices are heard. Coach Chelseaa works to ensure that Vision Step Team's routines and practices are relevant to a girl's current experiences and allows time for girls to express themselves. Coach Chelseaa hopes to continue to expand this team to reach all children who are interested in learning more about stepping and creating their own community. Will you help me welcome Chelseaa to the floor?
Hi, my name is Coach Chelseaa, she said I grew up here in Tacoma, and today I actually brought with me my foster daughters Tyron and Tiara. I've been with them for a very long time, and they've been integral members of our team. Just about a week ago, we had 42 girls participate in the Santa Claus Parade, and in doing so, those are kids from Macarver, Edison, Gray. There's so many schools to name because there's so many kids, and I'm at seven schools a year, and it's a lot of fun. So what they're going to perform for you today is the History Step, which talks about who we are since 2018, when we first got our Spark Grant from GTCA. Oh, they want... Yeah, sure. Where do you want them?
Why don't you come on up here?
Yeah, go on, go. Oh, yeah, I'm going with you.
Should we perform to the board or to the...
Oh, to the audience.
Like I decided that.
In 2018, we had a new dream, that Vision Step Team would burst onto the scene. We live in your city, we go to your schools, ladies of vision, are you healthy people?
Want to go around and shake hands?
Just imagine 50 of them. That was amazing.
Thank you, and would you come up so we can congratulate you?
Yes. Fantastic, thank you so much.
Yes. That was very good.
That was fantastic, thank you so much.
This is probably out of order, but I'd like to make a motion that I do all my presentations to the board in step. Maybe not, okay. All right. The second recognition tonight is for our December Gold Partner, and this is given to Comprehensive Life Resources and Kathy Hagan and her great work. So Comprehensive Life Resources is a private, non-for-profit, community mental health agency providing a continuum of behavioral health and community support services. They are committed to a recovery-focused, whole-health approach and philosophy that considers and embraces the whole person. CLR provides onsite counseling services for 12 of our schools at no cost to the district. This is essential, as statistically, 37% of students with a mental health condition drop out of school. This is the highest dropout rate of any disability group, and 1 in 10 Washington high school students report having attempted suicide in the last year. But here is the great news, more than ever before, breakthroughs in our understanding of the brain, development of effective treatment, and use of the whole-health interventions are helping people live full, rewarding lives. The majority, up to 80%, of individuals with mental disorders will improve with appropriate diagnosis, treatment, and ongoing monitoring. We are very grateful to the wonderful clinicians that serve our students, and it's the recommendation of the Community Partner Award that we recognize Comprehensive Life Resources and Kathy Hagan for their great work, and this nomination was made by Laura Allen, the Director of our Student Life Department. Kathy, will you come up?
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, hard act to follow. I don't have a step routine, but I really do want to thank the district for the recognition, but I also want to give it back to you. We started this partnership in 2011, and it's still going strong, and in large part, it's due to the commitment of the district in supporting mental health service to its schools. I want to just dovetail that the increasing rate of youth suicide is oh-so-important that we access youth early, and being in schools and impacting youth in families and communities is our passion at CLR. And Tacoma School District's innovation and willing to come to the table with us, I just can't, I can't speak high enough. Laura's great, I appreciate her partnership with us. I also want to recognize my clinical manager, she does the work every day, supporting the therapists in the school, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Would you please come up so we can, thank you. Item number 7.4, recognition of the Lincoln High School Football Coach.
Good evening, I'm James Neal, the Director of Athletics and Activities, and tonight we have an opportunity to recognize Coach Masaki Matsumoto, and this was brought to light by a young man from California named Brandon Gruber, and Brandon saw Coach on TV recently on ESPN and did some more research around him and the program and culture that he's developed at Lincoln High School, and felt necessary from Brandon's foundation, which started from his own experiences as a young man with Down Syndrome and not being recognized in school, and waiting till senior year before his peers kind of finally recognized him, that Coach is raising a group of young men in Tacoma Public Schools and boys to be men, and wanted to recognize that through his Foundation Project 321. And so we have a plaque here, but I'd also like to introduce Pat Irwin, the Principal at Lincoln High School, to talk more about what Coach Matt does for Lincoln High School and the community in Tacoma.
Good evening, everybody, it's an honor to be here to present the Lincoln High School Football Coach to the board. Coach Matsumoto, his staff, the team, the managers have a lot to be proud of. This year, they were third in the state football competition at 3A, and they were ranked fourth through the entire state in all classifications, that's the highest a Tacoma team has been in some 20-odd years. And we're the only city school, or the only urban school, to be in the top 25 in the state, and football has become the domain of private schools and suburban schools, so for Coach Matsumoto to accomplish what he has in his four years at Lincoln is pretty remarkable. But that's really beside the point. Now, for those of you who know me, I'm really competitive, and sometimes I can be kind of a jerk about it, but Coach Matsumoto came to me his first year, and he said, I'm just worried I'm not doing what you wanted me to do. And we were winning football games, and everything was great, and I said to him, I said, we could be 2-8, but you're still doing the right thing for our young men and our young ladies who are helping the program. So I want you to continue doing what you're doing, and if we win, that's a bonus, and we've had many bonuses with Coach Matsumoto because he is an excellent football coach, but it's always character first, character first, character first. One of my favorite moments of the school year was, I was down on the field after we won the game that put us into the state semifinals, and they had the team meeting afterwards, and this is, you know, cold, it's cold outside, and he gathers the team, and he said, I want to be really clear, he said, we're going to be in class on time, we're going to handle all of our assignments, we're going to do all of our work, because we will lose a state championship over you not following the rules. He said, I will bench you. And that's not something that he just pulled out of his pocket at that moment in time, that has been his message every day, every practice, every 5:45 a.m. training session that they have in the mornings, yes, 5:45 a.m., not waking up at 5:45, but being in the gym, ready to go at 5:45 in the morning. So he and his team work incredibly hard, and they all share the same commitment to character. One last thing that I want to say is, this year, there was something really inspiring that was coming from Coach and the kids. When they were talking about what they were doing, they said, this isn't about Lincoln High School, this is about Tacoma. This is about Tacoma, we want to represent the city, we want to celebrate the city. So I'm really proud of the work that he has been doing for our kids, for our city, and I would like to give him the Brandon Gruber Diamond Award, Coach Matsumoto. Coach?
Thank you, it is an honor to be here. I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to be here. I want to thank Pat for letting me do the work that I do, our assistant coaches who work year-round and really, you know, don't get paid much, and then our incredible kids who have bought into the vision of just working hard, and they, like you said, they train from January on at 5:45 a.m., and for them to do that, they're, you know, people say a lot of things about me, but they're really, truly the heroes, and it is my privilege to serve our students at Lincoln, like Tiana right here. It is incredible, and I get just as much back from them as they say I give them, so thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Would you please come up so we can congratulate you? Director Cobb is our resident Abe, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'm just so proud, I mean, it is about Tacoma, and I'm always about Tacoma, but it's also about Lincoln. So I just, I don't know, that's my soft spot, my parents went to Lincoln, my aunts and uncles all went to Lincoln, so every time, it's a community thing, like Chelseaa coming back, like, we do this, so I just am always so happy when I see people really getting vested in this community and giving back and continuing to foster that next generation who does the same, so it's exciting. Thank you for all the work that you do.
And we have a student board member from Lincoln, is there anything you'd like to offer from a student perspective?
Is this on? Okay. I just want to say that I'm really proud, and, you know, Tacoma, well, yeah, Tacoma teachers don't really get recognition, and I think, you know, I just wanted to say that I'm proud of being an Abe and just going to Lincoln, and so, yeah.
And I would just add, you know, it is about turning those young men into leaders in the community, and you have done an amazing job watching that team and the sense of love and loyalty that they have to one another and to the community. And I was at the game in Bellevue, the semifinal game, and I think Eastside Catholic, who went on to win the state championship, it was 14-7 at halftime, and those folks were nervous because they thought they were going to just roll in and steamroll us. And I think, there were many cool moments, but the Lincoln side was jam-packed, cheerleaders, band, fans, alumni, and several times throughout the game, and oftentimes initiated by the sideline, by the football players, the chant of 2-5-3. So that was definitely a team playing for a city and a community, and that's leadership. So thank you, Coach, we really appreciate all that you're doing on the football field and off.
Right, item 7.5, recognition of WASD 2019 Board of Distinction Award.
Thank you, President Hines and members of the board. Each year, the Washington State School Directors Association bestows its Boards of Distinction Awards on the best of the best school boards across the state. This honor is designed to encourage school boards to examine their practices as governing bodies and look at the impacts their actions have had on the decision, and their decisions on the success of students. The awards given when positive student outcomes and closing opportunity gaps show a clear link to the decisions of the school board. This year, the State School Directors Association examined your work. The association took into account your creation of the Committee of the Whole Process as a way to address policy gaps, revisions, and work plans. In addition, the association noted your expanded work... last name now, I used to call you Lisa, Director Keating and Director Bonright will be, are a part of this community too, because you've been part of the work. But anyway, I know, what I have recognized is that you work for our students, and also you support their activities. You've done incredible policy development, so it's not just about taking things one at a time now, but also writing it into policy so it can be over the long haul. You've still been shown a commitment to innovation, and so, you look beyond the box and are always talking about different ways that we can support our district. You support our staff. You're often at their events. You support this recognition and their attention. But the most, the most things, and Lisa and Elizabeth, don't listen to this, but the most important thing is that you give your time. Everybody thinks that the board works at this dais and that they, you know, this is their time commitment, but these guys are at retreats, they go to, they have student hearings, they have teacher hearings, they go to student events, they meet one-on-one with different constituents, legislators, and other staff. And they also have joint board meetings. We just had last week a joint board meeting with the City Council. We've had it with Metro Parks, we've had it with TCC. So, they, their time is just always taken up, and I appreciate that so much. So, I wanted to thank you for your focused work on behalf of students, and you so deserve the tenets of this award. So, thank you very much. Let's give them a hand.
Thank you. It's always kind of weird to have that recognition.
Do you want to shake our hands?
Oh, yeah. Do we get pins, Superintendent?
You already can pass those down.
But it is appreciated. I think that, you know, most of the work, and Elizabeth is already learning this, and Lisa is about to learn it, it is what I've affectionately referred to entering my ninth year as my other full-time job. You can just give and give and give, and, and it's super rewarding, and it often understandably goes unnoticed. So, it is nice when our state professional association, the Washington State School Directors Association recognizes the work that's going on. And thank you, Superintendent, for your kind words and for the audience for that response. That does, that does feel good. We usually hear from people when things haven't gone so well, so it is nice to stop every now and then and get to celebrate those sorts of accomplishments. Thank you very much. Any other board member wish to offer a comment? Okay, we'll move on. Agenda item number eight, the Superintendent's Report.
I am passing tonight. No Superintendent's Report.
That takes us to item number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members, encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The Superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the President's discretion. How many speakers this evening, Superintendent?
We have three.
So, you will be allotted your full three minutes. Who's the first speaker?
So, we have two speakers that want to come up together, but they will each have their own time limit. Eva Patu and Delaney Mitchell, please come on up.
Hello. My name is Delaney Mitchell. I'm a senior at Wilson High School. I was a freshman during my school's renovation, so I remember what it used to feel like before all the changes and the difference it makes now that we have an updated school. Schools are communities, not just buildings, giving students who learn there a sense of belonging and identity. As such, schools should be more than just functional spaces. They should be spaces that inspire. Young people spend close to half their waking hours at school, and inevitably, the physical school environment will affect not just their learning, but a student's emotional well-being as well. Students and teachers alike want a school, want to go to school that they can be proud of, a place that they are happy to spend time in and feel engaged. The new spaces at Wilson, particularly the New Four Hundred Wing and the Music Building, are spaces that engage students. The New Four Hundred Wing gives students more room to learn and explore their interests and comfort. The classroom and the building as a whole give a feeling of openness with plenty of natural light. Students can learn in a variety of spaces within the building. There are areas that extend the learning environment where students can collaborate and work together on group projects as well as spaces for informal presentations. In addition, for students interested in the culinary arts or broadcast media, the New Four Hundred Wing has created, has a state-of-the-art kitchen and a TV studio. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Media Lab that focuses on graphic design and photography, and the Classroom for Psychology, Relationships, and Human Development. I have been lucky enough to take several classes in this beautiful building, including Relationships and AP Psychology, and the new spaces have created a vibrant learning environment for me. I have also taken math classes in the new building every year since, every year since I have been at Wilson, and I find that I am better able to concentrate and feel more motivated in these modern, light-filled surroundings. I am now in calculus, and I am earning college credit while still in high school and plan on majoring in mathematics and physics next year. In addition to the new academic building, Wilson High School now has a top-notch new music building to has its band, orchestra, and choir. One of the really cool things about this building is the individual and group rehearsal spaces. These student, these spaces are important to the development of talent in those students whose passion is music, giving them a quiet place to practice. Overall, I think the physical school environment plays a big part in student morale and positively impacts learning. It is simply more fun to learn in a space that you feel proud to be in, are connected to because it supports your interests, and one that has been designed with flexible spaces so you can learn better both individually and collaboratively. The modernization of Wilson High School makes me personally feel valued and special as a student. I know that a school's physical environment is not the only factor that contributes to academic success, but it does serve as a powerful motivator to bring about positive change. I strongly feel that the improvement at Wilson High School has created an environment where I have been challenged academically, had my leadership skills honed, and encouraged to be my best self. I know that I will take all that I have learned at Wilson to college and beyond, and that I will make a positive impact on my community and the world. I am thankful that the people in Tacoma decided that Wilson High School, me and all my fellow classmates were worth supporting. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I should say that Delaney and Eva both came to the Superintendent's Breakfast this week to talk about the school construction bond, and they were very well-appreciated. So, thank you. And Eva, we look forward to listening to you. Come on up.
Hello. Can you, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. My name is Lady Eva Mona Patu. I'm sixteen years old, a junior at Oakland High School, which could be rebuilt for voters who approve the 2020 construction bond. I've only been at Oakland since the beginning of this year, but it didn't take long to realize the problems that this building has. To start, I thought the portables outside were storages, not someplace where we're supposed to learn. The ramp to our portables has holes in it. We have no elevator to support students who have been injured. It's either too hot or too cold, which makes it uncomfortable for us, which makes it hard for us to focus. There's a terrible smell in the few bathrooms we have. I mean, terrible. There's no, and we don't have a gym. The library is very small, and then I mentioned the building is a hundred and seventy years old. That is, that is old. When I say these things, I have students and teachers in mind. This building was built as an elementary school, so everything is small and short. We just don't fit here. Our teachers look like hoarders with their supplies piled up everywhere. There's no room for anything. There's no security system that I know of. Anyone can walk in the front door if they want to. We're not asking for a lot. We just need a building where everyone feels safe and comfortable. I mean, students and teachers. But if I got to make a wish list, our new school would have updated technology, a good security system, lots of outlets we need to plug in. Our school would be clean. We would have a gym. Our counselors and principals, our counselors and principals, excuse me, would have their own nice offices instead of having to share. We would have, we would feel good about coming here. Some people overlook us at Oakland. They give us this label of an alternative high school or a ghetto high school, as if it means we're not valued or important. People think kids get sent here because they've been bad or because they had a kid at a young age, but I'm here to tell you that's not the case. We are valuable, and we are important. And we choose to go to Oakland. We are here to make good choices to turn things around and start our lives on a path for success. For example, I'm working toward becoming a Palmer Scholar. I would like to pursue business, marketing, and law. I have a lot of dreams for myself. But if we had a comfortable place to come to, imagine what it could be like for future Oakland students. I know I'll be graduating and on the road to success soon, but I can picture what a new school would mean to future Oakland students, and I hope you can too. Thank you.
Final speaker is Liz Wall.
Hello. I'm Liz Wally. I'm a para educator with Tacoma Public Schools. I've been with TPS since 2006. I've been a Montessori assistant for the past nine years, seven years at Geiger Montessori, and this is my second year at Bryant Montessori. The communities of Geiger and Bryant would like to present you with this petition from the educators of Geiger and Bryant, which reads as follows. "We, the educators in the Montessori programs in the Tacoma School District, are very concerned about the current trajectory of the Montessori program. Our innovative schools are award-winning, and our Montessori program is funded as such. We strongly support the following important aspects of Montessori education, especially at Bryant Montessori. Multi-age classrooms, beginning with preschool, a consistent Montessori teacher and assistant classroom team, Montessori training for administrators, teachers, and assistants, the provision and use of Montessori materials. We look forward to an open meeting with Superintendent Santoro and the board at a time when all stakeholders can attend." Thank you.
Are there any additional speakers? Okay, thank you. That closed public comment. We'll move on to item number ten, the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Is there a second?
I second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four-zero. Item number eleven, Policy Matters, eleven point one, First Reading of Policy Forty-Two Sixty, Community Relations.
Just wanted to add a correction to Policy Forty-Two Sixty. The correct title is Use of School Facilities. I believe Community Relations is Section Four within the policy.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
We'll make that adjustment during the second reading for the board. Just want to provide the board an overview of some of the changes we made to the policy. We've worked, our facilities team has worked closely with our legal team to make two core adjustments to the policy. One, we wanted to make an adjustment of our overall pricing structure for the usage of our facilities. We wanted to ensure that we were aligned with local partners such as Metro Parks, as well as other school districts of comparable size. In addition, we looked at how we can group external businesses and define how they fit within our facility usage. For example, if you are a non-for-profit entity that is providing educational activity for our students, you will have priority in a different pricing structure compared to, say, a Fortune 500 company that wants to rent our facility for an employee event. So, those are some of the changes we made within the policy. With that said, the Chief Operating Officer recommends the board review the proposed changes to Policy Forty-Two Sixty and provide feedback before a second reading.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the first reading? Vice President Cobb?
Just in thinking about the groups and thinking about the way that you've described this, I understand the intent of separating nonprofits from other potentially for-profit entities, but I, I'm thinking of a specific, a specific example of, like, those who might serve as partners to the district in some other capacity but don't meet the, don't, aren't organized as a Formo 501(c)(3), but want to use school facilities to organize some kind of event that's beneficial to students, like the, the group of barbers in the community who want to do a back-to-school drive or something like that. They likely don't fit. They will, in most cases, don't fit the 501(c)(3) distinction. They are for-profit businesses, but they're small businesses that are community partners. So, I was just thinking about, and the group types, having some specific consideration to organizations like that, that are partners in, just carving out some space for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? One, insurance. I believe that we've required groups over the years to carry insurance. Is, are we looking at changing that? I've heard, my recollection is that it's been like a million-dollar insurance policy, which seems, I've heard from some groups, problematic for them to obtain.
We, we still are going to require entities to have insurance. I don't believe it's a million dollars. I have to get back to what that exact number, but I don't believe it's a million dollars.
Okay. So, that is a barrier would be something I'd be interested in, that if that is cost prohibitive for groups that might otherwise be able to get in there and use the space, that we have some other consideration of a waiver of liability or if there's an alternative to, to that insurance requirement?
Right. We definitely don't want to put up any barriers for any entity that wants to utilize our facilities.
Okay, thank you. Item number twelve, Quarterly Financial Update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomschools.org. About finance, and this evening, we have a report on the 2018-2019 year-end financial report.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on our year-end from the prior year. Currently, we're in the 2019-20 school year. The 2018-19 school year ended on August 31st. I know it's December. We finished our financials and closed out all the books, made sure everything was in the right place back in November, but we only had one meeting in November, so we weren't able to bring this to you at that point in time, although our normal schedule would be that you would see this information in November. I want to provide you with just a little bit of additional context this evening, as we have newer board members that may not have had the experience of participating in this conversation before, but I will try to be very brief at the same time, so. The first thing I wanted to point out is that our beginning fund balance, when we began last year, was a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. So, we started with a little bit of extra money in our savings account. Our fund balance is technically our savings account. Those are the resources that are left over from a prior year to be used towards additional resources for the, for the next year or additional needs for the next year, and/or in reserves for accounts that are required to be spent for specific purposes. When I look at our revenue for last year, for the 18-19 year, we do look at it in two ways. We look at it first from a budget to actual, so we look at last year's budget to last year's actual numbers, and then on the next slide I'll show you, we'll be looking at the prior year, 17-18, in comparison to 18-19. This slide represents the budget to actual, so this tells us what we planned to have versus what we actually ended up having. Our revenues were planned at about $467 million. We actually received revenues of about $464 million. That's a ninety-nine point three percent of what we had planned for. That's a really great percentage. We want to keep that in the ninety-nine percent range. And when we look at ourselves historically, over the past ten years, we've seen that we have been in the ninety-nine percentile of being able to predict what our revenues are going to look like. And when you consider the considerable growth of our revenues over that period of time, that's a pretty monumental task from a financial perspective. We used to have a budget of around $280 million about ten years ago, and now we're getting closer to the $480 million mark in the 19-20 year. So, we want to celebrate that as something that is an accomplishment from, from our perspective. When I look at the expenditures for last year, we do see that we had some salaries that were pretty significantly increased over what we had planned. We spent $213 million in certificated salaries, which was beyond what we had budgeted, a close to $207.5 million. And our classified salaries also were in excess of what we had budgeted. That's largely related to salary increases that we provided mid-year last year, and so, we built some of that into the budget, but we didn't have the resources to build all of it in. We didn't know at the time what our resources were going to be needed to be provided for that. And so, what we ended up doing is cutting supplies and materials across the system, and so, you'll see that we have nearly a $15 million savings in what we had budgeted for supplies and materials that was meant to offset those salaries. And that was not by accident. Those were the mid-year cuts that we had made. This slide represents the budget to actual, so this tells us what we planned to have versus what we actually ended up having. Our revenues were planned at about $467 million. We actually received revenues of about $464 million. That's a 99.3% of what we had planned for. That's a really great percentage. We want to keep that in the 99% range. And when we look at ourselves historically, over the past 10 years, we've seen that we have been in the 99 percentile of being able to predict what our revenues are going to look like. And when you consider the considerable growth of our revenues over that period of time, that's a pretty monumental task from a financial perspective. We used to have a budget of around $280 million about 10 years ago, and now we're getting closer to the $480 million mark in the 1920 year. So we want to celebrate that as something that is an accomplishment from our perspective. When I look at the expenditures for last year, we do see that we had some salaries that were pretty significantly increased over what we had planned. We spent $213 million in certificated salaries, which was beyond what we had budgeted, close to $207.5 million. And our classified salaries also were in excess of what we had budgeted. That's largely related to salary increases that we provided mid-year last year, and so we built some of that into the budget, but we didn't have the resources to build all of it in. We didn't know at the time what our resources were going to be needed to be provided for that. And so what we ended up doing is cutting supplies and materials across the system. And so you'll see that we have nearly a $15 million savings in what we had budgeted for supplies and materials that was meant to offset those salaries. And that was not by accident. Those were the mid-year cuts that we had made during the middle of last year, both in our positions that we eliminated mid-year, as well as other cost savings that we tried to achieve by not purchasing things. All of that resulted in our fund balance being a little bit higher than what we had anticipated. We budgeted $28 million, but our budget is set 18 months prior, as far as how we're budgeting our fund balance. So that's really a very difficult target to hit. We're not crystal ball holders. We try our best. But what we were expecting, when we were looking at our last quarter projections, was that we would have a closer to $33 million fund balance. And we ended quite a bit higher than that, at $40 million. However, I would say that that $40 million is only 1.5% more than what our last quarter said it would be. So these are not significant variances when you talk about them in relationship to the whole budget, but they sound like really big variances when you talk about them as millions of dollars. This fund balance results in us having about an 8% fund balance. Our fund balance policy is 5%. That's set by the board. It's the expectation of this district that we're not going to go below the 5%. It's certainly okay for us to go above the 5% and have a little bit more in reserves. However, we've had a policy and an expectation that we're going to spend our resources that are currently in the system on the kids that are currently in the system. And we want to support our students using those resources that we have now. We don't want to squirrel them away. We did want to try and save a little bit of money because we were seeing a deficit in the 1920 year. We've budgeted for that, and we plan to spend with our required reserves, we're going to spend around $9 million of our fund balance. So this puts us with a little bit of a cushion that could potentially be used for the 2021 budget, where we will also likely see a deficit, although we're not sure just how much that is yet. And then I want to point out on the, this is the year-to-year comparison, so 1718 to 1819. You will see that we had significant revenue increases in that year. And we knew that we would have those significant revenue increases, and that was expected. The question really became in how we're able to use those resources. While we got a lot of money from the state, we lost our flexibility with the way that they reduced our levy and pushed those resources into categorical funds, and that put us in a very difficult position. We had to repurpose the way we charged things. We had to redefine how we were using different resources. And then we had to eliminate resources that were no longer available in the freer category and put them into, and add into the things that were more restricted. I do want to point out on the expenditures that in our certificated salaries, we increased our certificated salaries by $23 million, our classified salaries by a little over $4 million, and then our benefits by $4 million. So when we look at the increases that we received in revenues, primarily those revenue increases went into salaries. And that's clearly evident, and now that we've seen where we've landed with the books closed. And our budget is generally around 85% salaries and benefits in comparison to the 100% of the budget, the remaining being discretionary funds for supplies, materials, books, you know, such. And this increase in certificated and classified salaries and benefits is also 85%. So that's not out of target from what we would normally consistently do in our application of new resources. And I think that's what I wanted to let you know this evening, and I'd be happy to field any questions.
Right, are there any questions or comments? Vice President Cobb?
Can you describe what was in other financing uses?
That was the $2 million, yeah. That was the $2 million that was provided to the Transportation Vehicle Fund. We'd been receiving depreciation funds through our contractor to cover the cost of old buses. They didn't have their buses up to date, and so we were losing out on the state resources for depreciation. And they were providing it to us per the contract. They had to pay us for them. We were taking those into the general fund. So we have now provided an allocation over to the Transportation Vehicle Fund of those $2 million. It's a one-time thing. All of our buses for our current vendor are currently brand-new, so we're seeing the depreciation come through. Our buses and the depreciation from those buses gets put into the Transportation Vehicle Fund, and we purchase buses out of the Transportation Vehicle Fund, so it's a replenishing opportunity for that fund. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? I had a couple of questions. Under Supplies and Materials, you noted that there had been cuts made. What items, what sort of items are in that category?
So I can think of one big thing is that we had intended to potentially put $3 million into our curriculum and instruction category, and we were quick to notice that we probably wouldn't be able to do that in the 1819 year. So we pushed the math adoption off, and we were able to purchase those materials out of the 1920 year instead. That way, we were able to delay and defer some of those expenses, and that's largely what we did with the resources, is defer where we could. And we saw a number of our building budgets try to save money, or a number of our departments tried to save money by either cutting out things that they needed or services that they didn't necessarily have to have.
And was that made at the principal level? Was there input from teachers?
I'm not sure that I can answer that question. Certainly, principals participated in that conversation, but, you know, this was a district-wide activity.
Okay, I, MSOC is always, when we talk about state funding for materials and supplies, and we often say we don't get enough MSOC from the state. I just want to ensure that we're not reducing money in a category that we feel is underfunded to begin with. Do copies fall into that category?
Copies could fall into that category. They're definitely part of the discretionary, and they would be considered part of the supplies and materials budget. We didn't make a concerted effort to reduce copies, although at some buildings, that may have been an issue. But I wouldn't say that-
Based on feedback I've received, I think it was, and then concerns teachers expressed that there was not copy paper in the copy room, but they needed to make copies, so now we had teachers out of pocket paying for copy paper. And I heard it was exacerbated with some of the new curriculum, where we had great materials, but an inability to print those materials.
So I've heard a little bit of this, the bargaining table, we've talked about this as being a potential issue. I would say that that would have been more of a building-by-building impact, and this was not something across the district where we said this is our demand of how we're going to address our budget issues.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And Dr. Garcia?
After you.
I'm switching topics.
I'd just like to, just take a quick moment. The Budget and Finance Team is small. As much as last year seemed like a lifetime ago, last year was a complete shift in funding in the landscape of Washington State. And that team led our district through a very difficult time. And it's hard sometimes when we look at the summaries to remember where we were in April with unknowns. And so not only kudos to the whole Budget and Finance Team for their leadership and taking a lot of unknown information, digging deep with the state to say, well, can this work for this situation and this work? But buildings and departments to roll up their sleeves and just try to do less with more without a lot of information. And I feel, as we've looked at some of the student achievement, including like our graduation rates, it's pretty miraculous how much we've been able to, through the hard work, maintain. And I feel extremely optimistic now that we do have a new landscape and some stability, that we can do what we do best, which will improve. And so Kristen Bell, Jody, Courtney, Roslyn, Rob, a few of the names of the many of them that are working hard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my last question, has the 2018-19 budget been audited?
It's in the process of being audited. Our auditors will be here. If they're not already here this week, they'll be here in the next several weeks. And then they will provide us with their report. We also prepare a comprehensive annual financial report, which will be a more detailed understanding of our financials based on generally accepted accounting principles, which not most school districts do. We're one of a few that do that. We hold ourselves to a higher standard in that respect. So that's where the auditors will come in and actually audit our financial statements and provide us with an opinion on whether or not we're following generally accepted accounting principles or not. We will also provide you with a year-end report. That year-end report is not quite complete, but will be by January, I expect. And so that will be an unaudited version of the report as well.
And during the strike year, a number of districts throughout the state, there were, there was information that was circulated that school districts had misspent money that was intended by the legislature through McLeary. And out of that, the State Auditor's Office created a couple of new laws that determine how we account for that money. Well, is that, when does that take effect?
So we will have some added scrutiny in the way that we provide reports back to the state for specifically levy funds, and that takes effect now. We are in the process of preparing our financials with that newer lens. Although I would say, you know, in my estimation of what was said during our strike conversations, I think that the expectation from the public was that we were not appropriating it in a way that they thought was their priority, and not so much that we weren't spending the money properly. And I think that our 23 years of excellence in finance awards proves that. In addition to the fact that I can't remember a time where we've actually had an audit finding on our financials from the State Auditor's Office, and they come every year and they do detailed analysis of our budgets. So, you know, it may have been a miscommunication around the expectations of what it means to misappropriate funds. Many people don't understand what that means, and I think that that's really the expectation, is it was about priority and not about mismanagement.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's important for the public to understand that there was, not just in our district, but across the state and many districts, which is what prompted the State Auditor. The State Auditor's Office was getting inundated with requests to audit individual school districts because of this misinformation that was being circulated. That was not factually. It was, there was nothing illegal that was done.
Correct.
And I think that that's important.
Emphatically correct.
Yes. I think that's important to get that out, and I know that we just had our last Citizens Audit Finance Committee meeting, and the State Auditor's Office was there, very complimentary of our practices. And I don't think that there's been any, in over two decades, any indication that we have been anything other than great stewards of the public's dollars, very mindful of the investment, nothing illegal, and all of the innovation and the achievement that has occurred as a result of it. So I'll be very interested to hear, once that SAO report is done, because if it's like most SAO reports, the language gets buried in a report. You get all of the publicity of the headlines and the allegations, and then when they go through and they do the clean audit, that sometimes gets buried. So I would ask the superintendent that when that is made public by the State Auditor's Office, that you make the board aware of it, so we can make the community aware of it, so that if there is any uncertainty about the way we've been managing the public's money, we can assure them that the SAO has confirmed our practices are compliant with the expectation. Thank you. Item number 13, Curriculum and Instruction, 13.1, Acceptance of Career Preparation and Launch Equipment Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Sorry, I was done.
New topic.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Career Preparation and Launch Equipment Grant from the OSPI, excuse me, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction in the amount of $100,000, an expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Motion carries four zero. Item 13.2, Acceptance of OSSI Comprehensive School Improvement Grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the OSSI Comprehensive School Improvement Grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $285,000, an expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval.
I second.
Are there any questions or comments? One, just to clarify, that these grants were allocated to specific schools? Could you just elaborate on how those schools were identified?
Going to defer to Courtney Leach, our Grants Manager. She will be happy to share that information with you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I shouldn't have sat in the back. So OSPI uses some of their Title I funds, 7%, that they set aside for school improvement activities. These schools that we have that are identified, Larchmont, Lister, Jason Lee, Reed, and Roosevelt, are Title I schools who are identified by OSPI for comprehensive supports, extra support, in this coming school year. And so they are to be used for funds, for activities aligned with their school improvement plans.
Thank you. Dr. Garcia?
So just real quickly, some of the unintentional consequences is timing. So, and there's no one to blame, but what we have found is it's very, it can become a challenge when we balance that with things like time for professional development and travel and a variety of others. And so there's a lot of work that has to be put in, in each of these grants, to meet the compliance, and then find workable plans to allocate the resources. And so just as you're digging deeper and building your background knowledge, even at $285,000 is a blessing, but there are very tight restrictions on how we can use those resources, for what purpose. And then, and so you'll see that oftentimes in staff attending trainings and extra time for programming and a variety of others. So I just offer that for context as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Motion carries four zero. Item 13.3, Acceptance of Special Education IDEA Part B Grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Special Education IDEA Part B Grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $6,843,922, an expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
A second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Motion carries four zero. Item 13.4, Acceptance of Title I Part D Grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Title I Part D Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $247,498, an expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
I second.
Are there any questions or comments? Vice President Cobb?
Do these funds, are these funds primarily used to support students who are at Raymond Hall? Or where are they primarily deployed? Or is it for like transition support too, or are they spent?
This is Part A. This is our main Title I grant.
This is Part D.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so, yes, it is for, there's a little bit of combination, but it's predominantly for students and support services in Raymond Hall, and as they transition out. And there's some activities and supports that are available there.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe some of this money is also going to go to Oakland High School. I think it was targeted for Oakland. Is that correct? Courtney?
I'm happy to clarify. Services provided by staff who do this work also support students at Oakland who need that support.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for staying in the front row. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Motion carries four zero. Item 13.5, Acceptance of Title I Part A Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Title I LAP, recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of Title I Part A Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $9,933,604, expenditure of funds in accordance with the accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Vice President Cobb?
Are there any, there's a lot of material here, but from a programmatic standpoint, are there any more notable shifts in how we'll be implementing the program using Title I Part A funds? I'm just thinking still, ESSA relatively new transition. So are there any more notable shifts in how we'll be deploying these funds in the last couple of years, I guess?
We have tried to notable shifts, work with individual schools to create- We have tried to, notable shifts, work with individual schools to create, there's some requirements about rank order and participation, and so I want to be very cautious about making sure I give accurate information. We have a base model in some of our support services that we were able to implement. And then, we try to give schools voice and additional support services. And so, sometimes they may select a counselor, an additional counselor, sometimes they may select a social worker, additional instructional supports. There's a variety of opportunities there. And then, within that, they have what we call discretionary dollars, where they build a plan of support based off of their local data and their students. And so, we've tried to shift to work in alignment with our schools, using the data to allow a lot of, as much flexibility to meet the needs of the students they have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero.
President Heinz, real quickly, I just want to clarify that the work in, with Raymond Hall and Oakland is not to say that students transfer right from a Raymond Hall to Oakland. As we heard this evening, Raymond Hall is one of, one of our programs, but Oakland is just one of the many portfolio options for a high school diploma that is equivalent to any of our other schools.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And I would add that several years ago, the Board took the step to officially remove alternative from Oakland, because SOTA is an alternative high school, SAMMY is an alternative high school, Oakland is an alternative learning environment. And I think as such, we're continuing to try with that rebrand, because there is a perception, and there's a lot of amazing work, and some really smart and talented kids in those schools, and that's an environment, and a school pedagogy that resonates with them. So, thank you, Dr. Garcia, for that clarification. That moves us to item number 14 on the agenda, 14.1, Approval of District Asset Preservation Program Annual Report.
I just wanted to provide the Board and the public an overview of the actual report. This is also known as ICOS Report, which is Information and Condition of Schools Report. This is an annual report that was required by OSPI. This is a facility condition assessment report conducted with internal resources, that's important to note, with internal resources, in which we assessed our mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, our lighting systems, the envelope of our building, which consists of exterior walls, roofs, windows, and we provide a score from excellent to poor, or a percentage from 100% to 0%. We have nothing that's 0%, just want to be clear with that. It's also, I want to be sure that, and clear that this is different from the Facility Condition Assessment Report that we utilized for the 2020 bond. That is conducted, utilizing external resources. As you can see, I believe this report is 130 pages. The report utilized for the 2020 bond is 5,000. So, just want to be clear, it's a different and more comprehensive analysis for the 2020 bond. With that said, the Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board review the annual report in compliance with OSPI's Asset Preservation Programs Building Condition Standards.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Vice President Cobb.
I always have a comment or a question. I just think that as we move forward with our benchmark work, and our strategic plan work, both this ICOS report and the Building and Condition Assessment for the bond, it seems like they provide an opportunity to surface a lot of good, relevant data points for some of the work related to facilities and conditions. So, I'm just interested, given all this data, what we carry for, interested to keep thinking about what we carry forward from a building's standpoint, and facility's standpoint, into our strategic benchmarking.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item 14.2, Approval of Interlocal Agreement with Sourcewell.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to sign an interlocal agreement with Sourcewell as a program and service cooperative.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item 14.3, Adoption of Resolution Number 2068, Establishment of the General Purpose Trust at Edison.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 2068, and approve the establishment of the General Purpose Trust Edison, sorry, General Purpose Trust Fund Edison.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Director Baumreit.
Yeah, I have one. This is unfamiliar to me, I'm just wanting a little bit of background, because it's specifically to one school, and I'm not quite sure how that happens and why.
Right. So, in governmental accounting, we have the ability to maintain trust funds on behalf of other organizations. We have a separate accounting that we provide to them, so that they're in their own little bank account within our, we just facilitate the resources. And they provide us with funds, they, the donors, provide funds that are used for specific purposes. Each of these schools that have a trust, and there are a number of our schools that have these trusts individually to that school, have a specific purpose that they're using those trusts for. The trust documents define what they can use the funds for, and what the expectations are.
So, is this primarily private donations that go into the fund?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Vice President Cobb.
Do we have a list of which schools do and don't have trusts that are, that serve this purpose?
I can get a list for you of that, yes.
I wonder if it's out of bounds, or if it's appropriate to communicate that in some way, in the event that there are folks out there who are interested in supporting kids, just surfacing the gap where there is it, so that if someone is interested in helping to support specific schools in this way, they know that that gap is there. Thank you.
So, are you?
Director Baumreit.
So, are you asking for the list and the purpose? Because I think the list by itself isn't as helpful as the list, and then what's the trust purpose?
I think that the trust purpose could be more of a challenge for us, because it's within each individual trust document, that we would have to go through and analyze to identify that. I'd say we have a good 30 or 40 of these.
But the school doesn't, the school isn't aware of what the trust purpose is?
Yes, they are. I'm sure that they are.
Just thinking, it doesn't have to be that complicated. Yeah, whatever. I just think it's helpful, because if it's for a specific purpose, we don't want people to think they can give money to the school, if, in fact, it isn't for a purpose that they can do.
So, I'm just, so I hear the request is a list of schools with existing trusts, and an explanation of the current?
A brief explanation.
Okay. Superintendent?
And what would the purpose be? I mean, so it's that we could, Andrea, sorry, Director Cobb?
My point was to surface the list of schools, primarily those that do not have a trust that serves a purpose that this one does, of meeting the needs of, or supporting, identify needs, meeting needs, I don't want to use the word needy students, that's why I'm stumbling over my words, supporting kids who have some need at some point in time, surfacing the list of those schools that don't have a trust, that currently serves that purpose, in the event that there is a donor that would like to provide that to some of our schools.
So, perhaps in the Friday report, to start with, a list of schools with trusts?
I think it might be easier, schools with no trust.
Okay. As long as it's comprehensive. We will defer to you to figure out, so that we know, and then the Board, then we can decide if there's enough, because I think what I hear, both Vice President Cobb and Director Baumreit saying, is there may be an opportunity then to publicize that people may not be aware of the opportunity to give.
Exactly.
And to Vice President Cobb's point, if there are schools in need that don't currently have the mechanism to receive, and if there's no cost to put that mechanism in place, then perhaps we would want to consider having trusts at all of our schools.
Yeah, exactly.
So, just, as you get that list, very quickly, that, all the trusts are not for the same purposes.
Right.
So, we will do our best to articulate that, so that you can see that variance, and to, I think aligned to what all of you are saying. So, that we throw a number out, that there are many, for those that are watching at home, those trusts serve a diverse approach, sports, clubs, variety of things.
I believe a few months ago, we approved a donation that was for creative writing, scholarship money for creative writing, so very specific. But I think to Vice President Cobb's point, for us to have a better understanding of, are there schools out there that don't even have that for us to consider, if we may want to put a more general trust in place to give schools the opportunity.
Yeah.
I see our partnership leader sprinting to the podium.
I just wanted to add that we do have a district-wide Help-A-Student Fund Trust, which was established by Tacoma Public Schools student, or teachers 35 years ago. It receives an annual contribution through United Way Funding, so it's a designation. So, that trust has been established, that is accessible to all the schools in the district, but it is focused on basic needs.
So, perhaps at an upcoming meeting, to be determined, that would be a good superintendent report, like a 10 to 15-minute report, we just understand, because it sounds very nuanced, and we can ask more specific questions, and give staff an opportunity to be prepared for our variety of questions. Sound good? Good. Superintendent?
Okay.
Good. All right, now we need to vote. Bringing this back, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item number 15, Other Business, 15.1, Approval of Resolution Proclaiming January 2020 is Tacoma Whole Child Month.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors proclaim January 2020 as Tacoma Whole Child Month, and encourage community partner municipalities, agencies, and organizations to declare their support for the whole child approach to educating and serving the children of our community.
Is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? I would just note, you know, this dates back to 2012, and it came out of the Board as we were working through benchmarks at the time, and this idea of social-emotional learning that evolved into the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative that includes social-emotional learning, but now so much more, and through partnership. And I literally remember in those early years, Dr. Garcia and Dr. Greg Benner from the University of Washington, as the Collective Brain Trust, engaging with the Board on what could be. So, it's pretty remarkable to sit here, seven years later, and see what this has become, and the work continues. But the selection by the Wallace Foundation, is one of six districts nationally, gives me confidence that we are moving in the right direction in an area where there's a lot of national interest, and the community support has been amazing. And, you know, the latest addition to that was a few weeks ago, when we, through partnership with the City of Tacoma and Pierce Transit, were able to give all high school students a bus pass, to support those opportunities that the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative has created. So, it's very exciting, and to the Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent especially, I really appreciate your leadership on this, that we are creating, really, the bellwether. This was, this is, this is new. This is, it's tough to be out there leading and going first, and I think the district has done an admirable job, so thank you for your leadership.
We certainly want to acknowledge Laura, acknowledge Laura too. She's been out there, she's a champion, and doing the work after.
Yes, thank you for all that hard work. Vice President Cobb?
I was just going to make a request, that, given that we don't always have these words in front of us, that maybe you or Dr. Garcia could read the resolution, just so we're all reminded about what we mean when we say the whole child.
Sure, I would defer to Dr. Garcia.
Of course you would.
So, I struggled reading growing up, and continue, so please be patient with me. Expressing the support for the whole child approach to education, and recognizing the role of parents, educators, and community members, in providing a whole child approach to education for each student. Whereas, each student deserves to be challenged academically, exposed to a comprehensive education that promotes critical thinking and creativity, and prepared for higher education, meaningful employment in our global economy, and lifelong success. Whereas, each student deserves to be supported by qualified caring adults, and receive access to personalized learning. Whereas, each student deserves to learn about and practice a healthy lifestyle. Whereas, each student deserves to learn in an environment that is physically and emotionally safe. Whereas, each student deserves to be actively engaged in learning, and connected to the school and the broader community. Whereas, the consequences for not ensuring that our young people are challenged, supported, healthy, safe, and engaged, result in lower academic performance, greater rates of school discipline, and higher dropout rates. Whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, most United States youth do not get the recommended amount of daily physical activity, and students who lack food and resources for healthy living are less likely to be attentive in school, and have higher absenteeism, which can lead to lower academic performance. Whereas, students feel unsafe in school, and are more prone to truancy and disruptive behaviors, have lower grades, and may drop out of school entirely. And, whereas, the Tacoma School District has set strategic academic safety and partnership goals to improve social and emotional well-being of our children. Now, therefore, may be resolved on this 12th day of December 2019, that the Board of Directors of the Tacoma Public Schools declares the month of January 20 as the Tacoma Whole Child Month, and encourages community partner municipalities and agency organizations to declare their support for a whole child approach to educating and serving children, the children of our community. And my ad lib is, whereas, it's the right thing to do.
Right.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Actually, I have a question.
Director Keating?
Some, my understanding is that there were three phases of the Whole Child Initiative, and it was a 10-year grant or initiative, is that? Where are we in that time? It feels like it's been forever in my head, so I just am curious where we are in that.
There are four shifts to the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative. Shift one is the schools, shift two is the community partner agencies that work with children, shift three is the families, and shift four are the greater neighborhoods. Our intent was never to stop after 10 years. Our intent was, is to create a movement and a culture, and you'll see in other focuses, that Tacoma is a child-centered community. Words from Greenstrike and the leadership there. What's most inspiring to me is, partners aren't supporting this work, partners are doing just that. They're partnering to lead the work. And so, you'll continue to see great efforts in shift two, with our community-based organizations, and the partnerships with GTCF, Metro Parks, the City of Tacoma. Shift three is an area that we still need to grow with, and we intend to try to find community leadership to help with the families and their. Shift four, we have, under Laura's leadership, been working with Safe Streets to talk about their leadership role, and where we are in that. And then, shift one, we continue to understand, we have just dipped our toes in the water, and there, the more that we learn, the more that we realize what we haven't been able to do and accomplish. And so, I'm here to say that I hope that we never stop, and that we've even changed our language to, it's no longer the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, to the Tacoma Whole Child Partnership, and we will continue to evolve.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. I think it's, before we move on, and we will have a more in-depth presentation, I believe, after the first of the year, but we did announce, primarily through social media last week, the graduation rate. And again, it increased. And I know, I think it's become a meaningful benchmark, because in 2010, it was 55%, and that was about the time that we heard from the community that, hey, Tacoma Public Schools, there's a lot of stuff you guys need to get better at, but we're losing too many kids. And that was a critical focus of, reduce the dropout rate, increase the graduation rate. And we just celebrated 89.8% for the graduating class last year, which I think is absolutely amazing, and not by accident. It's a testament to the work that's come out of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, and through the Partnership Office, and the work that Amanda has done, and Laura, and others, and the leadership of the Superintendent, the Deputy Superintendent. And I had a lot of people say, well, there was no cake this year. How come we didn't have a big? And my response is, that's the new normal in Tacoma. That's the graduation rate in Tacoma, and it takes a hell of a lot of work to keep it there. You know, other people, how come it only moved up, you know, now it's, it only moved up a few decimal points? Well, because when you come from 55 to almost 90, that's pretty great. And when you look at our seven-year graduation rate being now almost 92%, we are losing less kids. That's changing life trajectory for kids and families. That's changing life trajectory for kids and families. And I absolutely, wholeheartedly believe that it's connected to the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, that those kids feel connected and nurtured, that the communities wrap their arms around them, they have places to go that are welcoming, they have people that care about them, um, and it's just been awesome to see all of this come together. So I think it's appropriate that, uh, we take a month of January and just celebrate the heck out of it. Item, I'm sorry?
Just the word cake, cake.
Kevin is thinking that January is a good opportunity for cake for the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, and I would like to formally acknowledge Kevin that I agree with you. So we will be working on some cakes at least in January for Whole Child.
Fair enough, sounds good. Item 15.2, adoption of resolution number 2069 and acceptance of contract with former construction company.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number 2069 for the acceptance of, of project completion and improve the acceptance of contract for former construction company for the new environmental learning center.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. I second.
Are there any questions or comments? Vice President Cobb.
This just feels like it was such a long time ago. Can you refresh us about like the typical timeframe for when people like take occupancy of a building and when you actually formally like get to this point?
So I, I will tell you that this is an industry standard for acceptance. I believe this is almost two years after the fact. I will tell you that I, our team has made, uh, adjustments. We won't bring back to the board in public acceptance of a project two years later. We've made those necessary changes.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item 15.3, adopting a resolution endorsing Tacoma Public Schools Proposition One, Neighborhood School Improvements and Safety Upgrades on the February 11th, 2020 ballot.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors adopt this resolution endorsing the Tacoma Public Schools Proposition One, Neighborhood School Improvements and Safety Upgrades on the February 11th, 2020 ballot.
Dan, do you want to come up and talk about?
Sorry. Do you need a motion first? Sorry.
Yeah, let's do the motion first and then we'll get into the questions. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move enthusiastically.
Second. Second.
Right. Mr. Vopel.
Yes, did you want me to read the whole thing?
Would you read the resolution and then if the board has any questions?
I'd be glad to. A resolution of the Board of Directors of Tacoma School District Number 10, Pierce County, Washington, for Tacoma Public Schools to endorse Proposition One, that will be a proposition to the electors of the City of Tacoma at the special election to be held on February 11th, 2020. Whereas the Tacoma School Board believes our entire community benefits from our children receiving a quality education at neighborhood schools that are safe and provide the best possible environments for teaching and learning. And whereas Tacoma Public Schools and community partners are investing in what's working with graduation gaps closing and high school graduation rates reaching a record-high 89% and surpassing the state average. And whereas some neighborhood schools have deteriorated and need to be upgraded or replaced to meet modern standards, and Proposition One renews our community's commitment to provide students and educators with the best possible environment and facilities for teaching, learning, and extracurricular and after-school activities. And whereas community partners have joined Tacoma Public Schools to provide access to programming throughout the district and, and help close gaps for students of color and students from families living in poverty, so that every child in Tacoma has the opportunity to succeed and achieve for their potential. And whereas Tacoma, the Tacoma Public Schools prioritize basic safety issues such as fixing or replacing leaky and deteriorating roofs, upgrading buildings for earthquake safety, and up-to-date alarms and sprinkler systems, so our kids can learn and play in a safe environment. And whereas Proposition One will address safety, health, and security, including secured entrances and surveillance cameras at every school that does not already have them, upgrades to heating, ventilation, and plumbing to maintain clean air and safe water. And whereas investments in neighborhood schools throughout our community benefit the entire community by providing dedicated community meeting spaces, access to playing fields for youth and adult sports, and partnerships with Metro Parks Tacoma, YMCA, City of Tacoma, Greater Tacoma Community Foundation, Boys and Girls Club, and numerous other partners to provide recreation and summer and after-school programs and activities. And whereas Proposition One will fund energy efficiency improvements and sustainable technology to make our school buildings greener, healthier, and more efficient to maintain. And whereas Proposition One will fund district-wide renovations, upgrades, and replacements of athletic facilities, including tennis courts, swimming pool, playgrounds, playfields, and stadium improvements. And whereas taking care of basic school improvements and upgrades means buildings will last longer and save money in the long run. And whereas we share Tacoma Public Schools' priority to invest in schools and kids, so our community will continue to be a place where every child, regardless of background or economic circumstance, has a neighborhood school that provides a safe and challenging learning environment. And now therefore be it resolved that Tacoma School Board endorses the Tacoma Public Schools' Proposition One to fund 535 million in neighborhood school improvements and safety upgrades, general obligation bonds, which will appear on a special election ballot February 11th, 2020, and hereby encourages the voters within the boundaries of Tacoma School District Number 10 to support this investment in all neighborhood schools.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Uh, I, I would just add that, you know, when we think about educating kids, and I've, I've heard people say, oh, it's not about the building, but yeah, it is about the bill. It's not about bells and whistles necessarily, but the basics of clean and healthy and safe, we heard from the students during public comment, that there need, that, that for a long time in Tacoma, there were schools that were known to be well-resourced, and there were schools that were not well-resourced. And, and the work, starting with the 2013 bond and continuing with this bond, is to ensure that all students, regardless of their address, can walk down the street into a school building that's clean, healthy, and safe, that supports student learning, that gives them an opportunity to, um, have access to technology and other pedagogies, that it's not the haves and the have-nots. And, and I'm not convinced that we have completely closed the gap, but this bond will go a long way. When I looked at the materials, uh, that Mr. Williams presented and that his staff developed, there is truly something in this bond package for every part of the city. And when you look at the GIS mapping of the investments that have been made back to 2001, you can see significant improvements in closing those resource gaps, uh, that gives kids, uh, an equal footing. And I think that, um, you know, it really resonates when I hear the students, and I'd be interested if the students have any comments, but the, but the, the students that are in these buildings every day and what those sorts of environments mean to them, because we've heard from more and more students, and it is, it's more impactful that there is a, a perception that, oh, they're just these big, you know, fancy buildings, but the reality is, there's a lot of improvements needed in our 70-plus campuses to maintain that almost 90% graduation rate and all of these incredible opportunities that the students have. So I, I think that this has been a, you know, from a financial perspective, very well-crafted. And I think from a facilities perspective, we have absolutely prioritized the needs that we have at this time and in the future, and I think that it's the wise thing to do. So thank you for the way that you put the package together and, uh, and I look forward to the ability to continue to close that gap, so that this vision of every student being able to walk out their door and into their neighborhood school, um, i- is something that becomes a reality. Students, did you have anything to add? Is?
I can definitely say that going to Wilson High School, we have several different buildings that are all different ages, um, and going from the 400 Hall, which is brand-new, that, um, one of the speakers was talking about, um, and then going to the older buildings, there's definitely, um, a shift in not learning ability, but in the mood of the building and having these new, um, like what you were saying, having these nice facilities definitely does facilitate learning, which is great.
Thank you.
Um, coming from Lincoln, a very old school, I think it does impact students from coming to school, 'cause, you know, in, having a learning environment that just isn't very, I don't know, let's say, um, uh, I'm kind of like staring right here, because, um, as a student, I go to school and, um, I would see like students going into a classroom that has a very nice, you know, educational environment to whether, I mean, to a, let's say, I don't want to say this kind of room, 'cause this kind of room is kind of plain and you just don't want to do anything.
We agree.
But, yeah.
Thank you for sharing. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item 16, report to the board, 16.1, strategic benchmark, annual report. Superintendent.
Ask, uh, Amanda Scott Thomas to come forward and present her report. Thank you, Amanda.
All right. So this is, uh, can you hear me? Is this on?
Yep.
Okay. So this is a kind of a close-out report. Um, I come before you twice a year. I was here in May, and I'm back here in, um, December. I was supposed to be here in November, um, but got called away for, um, some work with the United Way, so thank you for, um, letting me, uh, present here in, uh, D- December. And so I'm going to give you some, um, data, um, closing out last school year, um, because I, again, I presented in May, um, we didn't have, um, full data for last year, so I'm going to be, uh, providing that for you today. Uh, as the Director of the Partnership Office for Tacoma Public Schools, uh, I am charged, um, with leading the work, um, in our office around fully engaging parents, community, and young people, and our staff, and the education of our children. Um, the priority benchmark, uh, that I reported on to you last year, uh, that wasn't, uh, didn't have all the data, um, was a, a priority benchmark around our volunteer numbers. Um, as you can see, um, we have decreased slightly in volunteers for the 2018, 2019 school year, but you will notice that there is a trend, uh, there was a four-year trend, um, that we were at about 10,000, uh, and now we have a two-year trend about, um, 8,000. So what I'm hoping is that will hold steady or increase over this next couple of years, and I'm going to talk to you about some of the next steps. So the key findings were, if you noticed in the, uh, data that I shared with you, it was around 2017 that some legislation around background checks that increased the cost, um, for us, uh, being able to run those background checks and for volunteers to be able to engage, um, because of, uh, an increased cost around fingerprinting, where our numbers decreased. Uh, and so you see that drop happening, um, uh, in 2018. Um, for this last year, there was a decre- a decrease in 841 volunteers in 2019 as compared to 2018. Um, every year, annual, annual legis, FYI, um, 50% of the total, total annual volunteers are processed during the September and October months of every school year. So I'll be, um, having, uh, data for you, um, next year, and hopefully, again, our trend is holding steady, and we are working on some things to increase our volunteerism. Uh, the next steps, um, around volunteerism and improving this benchmark, um, the visitor sign-in pilot is going on at central administration. I don't know if you noticed, when you checked in, there's kind of a new system where you, um, get your ID scanned, uh, and you go into a system for centralizing our volunteer system here at CAB and also at schools. And so we have a pilot happening that's being, um, facilitated by our Director of Safety, uh, and he has instituted this pilot, um, for, uh, this new check-in system, centralized system at Crescent Heights, Manitow, Jason Lee, First Creek, Stadium, and Wilson. Um, we are also, we have started, uh, through the Partnership Office, the, uh, piloting of the VOMO program, which actually we were supposed to be, uh, facilitating a simultaneous launch or pilot of these programs, but because of budget constraints and some things that have happened, um, we've been doing these, um, together but independently. So VOMO is the Volunteer Online Volunteer Management System. It's sort of like a Facebook for volunteers. It's a way for, um, schools, staff to be able to post volunteer opportunities within their building, as well as recruit volunteers. Volunteers will go into that system, build a resume, uh, they'll be able to share what their talents are, where they would like to volunteer, and it, again, is a way to incentivize volunteering, um, to collect some demographic information about our volunteers, um, and to also kind of systematize how we engage and maintain our volunteers in our district. So currently, we have our family liaisons that are piloting the VOMO platform and select community partners that are testing the system out. So the goal is, um, for us to, um, launch this formally, but due to a loss of a project manager position that was kind of helping to facilitate this work, because it isn't an, an interdepartmental effort, um, and a staff person, uh, decreased out of, uh, the Partnership Office, we've had to extend the timeline, timeline to actually roll this out. So we're kind of recalibrating how this is all going down. So the work is moving forward, we are just at a slower pace. The other, uh, priority benchmark that I reported on, uh, was the, uh, vo- formal partnerships for the 2018, 2019 school year. Um, we are trending for the last three years around 60 new partnerships each year, and when I say 60 new partnerships, these are specifically partnerships that are formalized in the 2018, 2019 school years that are student support ELOs, um, uh, Positive Youth Development Program. That's what our office focuses on. So this is not the bulk of all the new partnerships in the district, but those, so, so, student support, um, expanded learning opportunities, um, site-based programs for young people, that's what this number represents. Uh, the reason that, um, this, this, uh, uh, data stays the way it does is because when we establish and formalize partnerships through either an MOU or a contract, each year, we have some partnerships that are sustained and we have some that expire. So that number vacillates from year to year. And so we may have a, a program that is being provided in a school that has a three-year grant, so that program will be going on for three years and then it disappears. Uh, we've had programs like that, that will go away for a year or two, and then the money will come back and they'll be, they're able to serve students. Uh, so we track those expanded learning opportunities, and for the last school year, we had 64 of those. Key findings, uh, that our partnership data reflects new formal partnerships, as I said, um, I didn't have this information for you in May, uh, but you may have seen this information before, but we collect this information too as part of the Partnership Office. But the next move, Summer Jobs Program, that we do in partnership with the City of Tacoma, uh, they had 20 employers that hosted interns. We had four new participating employers, so those, uh, folks had never, um, engaged in the program, and we were able to serve 75 Tacoma Public School students that participated as interns last year. So, um, for so far where we're at, um, we are for this, this school year, which I'll have data at the end of the year, but just, um, from September to, to date, we have, um, established through the Partnership Office four extended learning opportunities through, um, MOUs and contracts. And I wanted to give you kind of a highlight of, of those partnerships, uh, that we are formalizing. We have Cascade Bicycle Club, the Major Taylor Program, which is designed to, uh, transform and empower TPS middle and high school students in grade seven through 12, underrepresented in the cycling community through bicycling by promoting leadership, personal responsibility, and positive, positive physical and social development. The Major Taylor Program is a year-around youth development program focused on creating access and opportunity for youth in diverse communities, so these kids actually do, uh, I think there's like a Portland Shrek during the summer, so it's a very cool expanded learning opportunity. Uh, we have Defenders of Wildlife, Orcas Love Rain Gardens. The Partnership Office worked with this org and our Facilities, Facilities Department to establish this partnership, serving all Tacoma Public School students and their families by pri- by providing access to educational, interactive rain gardens, and will have an opportunity to learn about the role of green infrastructure and protecting orcas. So that's a newly established program this year. Um, and then I wanted to give you a couple of highlights of, we were a mighty office of three, now we are a mighty office of two, and Talana Pitten, uh, my administrative assistant, um, I wanted to give a shout-out to her for the work that she does day in and day out, but this year, um, she has facilitated the delivery, um, coordinating the delivery of 400 holiday meals to, uh, TPS families via, uh, our community partners, the distribution of 53 $200 gift cards from longtime partner, the International Longshoreman of Union 23, um, securing and providing Christmas toys for TPS families from our partners, the Tacoma Yacht Club, Eastside Assemblies, and TPS internal departments are supporting families this year. And we actually just got a, a phone call today, we have 50 meal baskets, um, from Absure Construction, and so our office helps to make sure that that gets, um, dispersed, and Talana takes the, the weight of all that, so shout-out to Talana Pitten. dispersed and Talana takes the weight of all that. So shout out to Talana Pitten. Oh, did I?
Those are just some of the highlights.
Just some of the highlights. And next steps, we're going to continue to focus again on partnerships, the district goals and our benchmarks, establish an efficient, aligned, dual-capacity-centered family and community engagement work, greater engagement and partnerships focused on system impact. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the work that I'm doing now that we've kind of had to trim down a little bit and focus. I've been engaged sporadically in my time with the district in some systems work, but I'm doing a little bit more of that now. So I wanted to let you know that I'm serving as the co-chair of the Kids' Mental Health Pierce County Access and Care Committee. And the other co-chair is a district staff person from Puyallup School District. And we received grant funding this year for this committee to host the first youth mental health forum that's going to happen in 2020. So that's some of the system work. They're doing amazing work. This is a coalition of community providers. There's medical professionals, community members, social workers that are all getting together to create better aligned systems. And so I'm engaged in that work. I'm also serving on a steering committee for United Ways, Pierce County's Building Community Resilience. That's where I was in November when I didn't participate in the board meeting. But we're addressing dual ACs, so not only adverse childhood experiences, but adverse community environments, partnering with our community to address and advocate issues impacting Tacoma Public School families. Specifically, we're looking at work around the benefits cliff. So when our families that are on public support gain, gainful employment and they're knocked off the rolls, they have to pay for childcare, the subsidies are gone. And so that can get somebody back into a crisis situation and also affordable childcare. So our community, Tacoma, one of the reasons that I love it is that people get together, they roll their sleeves up, and they do work together to align systems and make things better for, for our families. And then lastly, Principal Lisandra Ness and I are working on a Girls' Juvenile Justice Project, Justice for Girls, the Department of Children and Youth and Families out of Olympia. And the Washington Center for Court Research, along with our community, are meeting together to look at issues of girls in the juvenile justice system because those statistics are incredibly disturbing. And there was funding for a research project and we formalized that partnership through an MOU. So we're working on that together. And I just want to say that at that meeting, I was at this meeting for this work this week, and one of the young ladies, we were at the Fab Five Space, she was a former Tacoma Public School student, and she talked about the partnership with the free bus, the transportation. And she said that when she was a young person going to high school, she said her family struggled with housing stability. And she said, "That would have made so much difference for me." So I just wanted to let you know that when I'm out in the community and doing the work, the impact that we are making in Tacoma whole child and just working together alumni or even reflecting on, man, I wish this was around when I was in high school. So it's definitely making a difference. I love my job. I'm feeling so warm and fuzzy today. And then we talked about cake too, so I'm just happy.
Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the report. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Or maybe a, I don't know if it's a thought bubble or a question. As a former intense volunteer and burnout volunteer, I know that there is always an issue in maintaining volunteerism and, you know, and families and community members that have the privilege to even be able to volunteer and have that time. Is there, is there a mechanism to get feedback on volunteers' experiences? Or is there a conversation about how do you find out what works, what didn't work? What would you have, because I know coming into a public school system as a parent, I mean, it was like as a, with a kindergartner, it was a massive learning curve in terms of like just understanding the system of a school and public education. And so, you know, I learned a lot because I got to be able to volunteer. And so the more I volunteered, of course, the more you volunteer, the more they ask. And the more jobs that, you know, volunteer jobs that come out. But I just wonder about the sustainability and that burnout.
Yeah.
And I know that like particularly there's more volunteerism, I believe, in the elementary school setting.
Yes.
And then there's just sort of a gradual disconnection. And, and some of that is where the kids are like, "Bye." And other parts where it's just like the shift in the trajectory of the student and needs are different.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious about, is there thought or have you done any like feedback to find out what, how people want to volunteer or the ways that they do and what their experiences have been?
Well, Director Keating, that was the impetus for our whole push for a centralized volunteer system because it was happening at the building level and it was sporadic. It was haphazard engagement. And so I have an appointment with the vendor in January. Again, that's now my role. And I'll be talking to them about the capability of the system in regards to retention because we didn't have a systematized or general way that we retained volunteers. But the cool thing about VOMO is that it has its integrated incentivizing for volunteerism and then we're able to collect data. So I'll have more information in January about what demographics we can collect, what feedback we can collect. But the hope is that this new system will re-energize volunteerism because it'll be a brand-new way to kind of highlight what's going on in schools and opportunities. And we'll all be doing the same thing. So that's the goal and it's very important and I'm hoping to get those numbers back up.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Vice President Cobb.
How long is a background check good for? And, well, I have a follow-up to that.
Okay. One year.
Oh, so that's a cost that we need to, that volunteers or whoever needs to cover annually?
Um, the only thing that volunteers pay for via our background checks is a fingerprint background check. And those are only needed for like chaperoning overnight. A watch volunteer check is free of cost to the volunteer, but we do those annually.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Amanda, thank you for your report. We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, board comments and reports. I'll start with our student board members. Anything to share?
Um, yes, I have two things. So one is a follow-up from earlier, your comment about the learning environment. So I was just wanting to say that I believe that like an area, more open environment like what we have at Wilson in the four hundred hall and what certain other schools I have been to through sports have, definitely helps with overall mood, not even just in the learning situation, but the feeling of being less like this is a prison and more like this is something I want to be going to. And just at Wilson, between two different buildings, the four hundred hall and different halls, there's a mood shift that you can, you can feel the difference between like this is a more of a college, you're respected as a student environment, and this is more of a, you're sitting in a classroom environment. And I think that the learning facility has a big part in that. And I think that every student deserves to have that experience. So that was, that's great to hear that we're, we're working on that. And then also, when it comes to community events, it's, I feel really proud to be a part of Tacoma Public Schools for a variety of reasons. And one of them is definitely our Strong Arts Program, which has been definitely on display in the last couple of weeks. There's been a lot of concerts district-wide for the holiday season. And one that is coming up at Wilson is the choir concert next Wednesday, which, yeah, and there's been a lot of band orchestra concerts the last couple of weeks that have been pretty well attended, which has been great to see. So.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say that I am honored and lucky to be a part of Tacoma because I don't think any, like any other students just realize how you guys care so much about us. And I just wanted to let everyone know that you guys are appreciated for caring about us. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's sweet.
Director Keating.
Um.
You've been a board member for two hours.
Look at that. Um, I got to go to, my daughter is in the orchestra at Wilson. And so we were at the orchestra-band concert combination on Tuesday. And it was really, it was fun. And as a Wilson Ram, I can actually say I represent Wilson Rams. It's always fun and interesting to go because I, music kept me in school, kept me engaged. And, and so I performed on the same stage that I got to watch my daughter perform on. So that was really meaningful and fun. But yeah, so I just, and there's so many opportunities to go and see students and what's happening. So I know my calendar is going to get even more full.
Thank you. Director Bumbry.
Well, it's been a busy month. I have been engaged, and I think I mentioned last week at our community, the whole, that I've had the opportunity to meet each of the cabinet members and spend some time with the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, and really get to know kind of how the leadership in this district is working. And, and I have to say, I'm incredibly impressed and proud to be on this team. And to say now, my, my plan is anyway, in, in January, to start going out to the schools that I'm liaison and other schools and really get to know what's happening out in communities. Really exciting and good luck to you because this first month has been like a fire hose and it's been super fun. But it also, when talking with students, it's really, it's incredibly grounding to, to the work that we're doing. And it makes, the policy levels up here, but when we hear from you guys and when we go out to schools and meet students and those teachers that are working with students, it puts meaning and faces behind the policy and it's, it's really meaningful. So thank you very much for your participation and also for all the teachers and, and parents who are watching and, and teachers that are teaching our kids and the kids who are trying so hard to learn and, and grow up in this crazy world. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Cobb.
Just have a couple of comments. One, I just want to give a shout out to our public information office and our communications team. This, I'm really excited to see the next episodes in this new series of conversations. If you haven't watched the first one yet, you need to go on our Facebook page or on YouTube or wherever it's posted and check out that new series of conversations. It's really special. I've already shared it lots. Also, I just wanted to reflect on the positive, I think, conversation we had with the city council. Was it last week or the, last week?
Yeah.
I don't know. Last week. It just is a reminder about the strength of the partnerships in this community and our kind of shared vision for, in many ways, just kind of access for all, access to it all. Like, I don't think we are a community these days that talks at all about putting limitations on ourselves or on our kids or on what we can accomplish. So I get really energized by sitting around the table with other kind of like-minded colleagues. And not like-minded in the sense that we all agree on everything, but I think we come together around basic values and, and vision for the continued success of the community and the people who are in it. So that was really encouraging. Specifically, I'm reflecting on the conversation we had about continuing to seek youth voice in all the, that we do where we're trying to impact outcomes for the kids in our community, like where we can continue to cultivate their leadership and to tap into this, all this leadership that we're cultivating and continuing to think about representation in those groups and making sure that those groups of young leaders fully represent all the different kinds of students we serve, all the different perspectives and backgrounds. And in that too, it didn't come up there, but thinking, continuing to think about language access in that too. So how are students who are still being supported through English Language Development Services as high school students or as middle school students, how can they be engaged in these opportunities too? But in general, my takeaway was that we've got good colleagues across the city. The other thing, related to the youth voice piece, just want to raise up again some of the conversation we were having in our last committee of the whole meeting about seeking our students' input and where we go next and prioritizing areas of focus for our health and safety benchmark. So I want to keep the conversation going around how we'll figure out, figuring out the process for facilitating that engagement. And then lastly, this came up, I didn't say it at the community of the whole, we were having some conversation on the topic of mental health, but then it also kind of surfaced for me tonight when we were recognizing the accomplishments of the Lincoln Abbs team and that community. Like there's, we've, and I, we've all heard, "It takes a village." And we, we were talking earlier in the context of us having a part in raising these kids, but I just want to continue to raise up the role that our parents and family members play in raising our these babies. Like we get the privilege of taking like the warm handoff and carrying it while they're with us, but just want to continue to raise up the role that all of our parents and family members are playing in setting them off on the right foot. We spend a lot of time talking about the challenges that we're trying to overcome and the barriers that we're trying to eliminate, but it, we talk about it so much because it's so important that it can become like this, this image, like it's all families are struggling or all families need support. That's not the case. And even when they do, they're still doing the best that they can to support and raise up their kids. So as we sit here and kind of acknowledge all the hard work that we are all doing sometimes, and most, three of the four of us up here are parents of TPS kids, so it's not like we're out of that game too. But I just want to call out that group as a whole and the important role that they could play. And said, like they tee it up and we get to just continue to run with the ball while they're with us. So that's it.
Thank you. And good sports analogy.
Oh, and I don't play sports.
Yes.
I tried to play volleyball at Lincoln one year and I was so anxious every game that I faked a stomach ache. That was my volleyball career. I was like, "Oh, my stomach hurts so bad." I didn't know the, I didn't have the language that the kids these days have around anxiety. I was anxious. And it manifested as, "Oh, my stomach ache." I didn't, I played one game my whole season and was sick every other one. Sick.
I had the pleasure last night to be at Stadium for their combination choir-band orchestra concert. And it was amazing, just super incredible. And missing my middle schoolers concert tonight at Mason, but that's another program that's unbelievable. And so it is great to see, you know, the, the expression of the arts. And I think the challenge that as we get more mandates at the federal and state level to increase access to higher-level science and math, what get, often gets pushed out is PE and the arts. And so for us to continue to make that a priority, and I think this Tacoma creates partnership as a way to do that. But just the, I, I know my son, my sixteen-year-old connects to school primarily through music, like that is his outlet. And so it is wonderful to get to see these talented kids. And Tanya, you do a great job of making us aware of these events. And I would ask, especially as we have these like winter concerts now until the end of the year, and then I believe there are some that continue into the first of the year, if you would put those on our calendars, because I would love to get out and be able to see some of these other students perform as well. Really, the only issue that I want to talk about, and yes, it was just last Tuesday that we met with city council, it's pretty crazy. And it was the Monday, the night before where we had a meeting, all Pierce County school districts, school boards, and administrators met with all of the Pierce County state legislators. And it was, it was a fantastic meeting as a football fan on a really terrible night because Seahawks are playing on Monday Night Football. But nevertheless, there were four of us and the superintendent were at this meeting. And the number one priority that this board has been talking about has been, well, it's really starting to coalesce around mental health under that Health and Safety Initiative. I think we had a very robust conversation last week. There are so many things that are important that we should be doing. But what came out of our conversation last week was an emphasis on mental health and specifically suicide, kids in crisis. What are we doing for intervention and what are we doing for prevention? And, and that was, we're not alone in that. So we heard from our colleagues throughout Pierce County that we are, if we're not technically in a crisis, we are darn near a crisis level. And school districts were sharing the number of students in their districts that had actually self-harm and not just high school, middle school, elementary school-aged kids, you know, just really sad to hear. And so I appreciate the, our work in Tacoma to move forward. And one of the things that we heard from the legislature, they, they called out Tacoma because the City of Tacoma was able to pass a one-tenth of one percent sales tax for mental health. And at this meeting last week, the state legislators brought up that Pierce County has not passed that one-tenth of one percent and recommended that we urge the county to take that under consideration. So what I am asking for you tonight to consider is that Tacoma Public Schools, through the superintendent and our government affairs resources, works to put together a letter on behalf of Tacoma Public Schools that we would then circulate essentially as a dear colleague letter to other Pierce County school districts that would ultimately wind up going to the Pierce County Executive, Bruce Dammire, and the Chair of the Pierce County Council, Doug Richardson, collectively as Pierce County school districts urging them to pass a one-tenth of one percent mental health tax. We know that the City of Tacoma... We know that the city of Tacoma, their leadership in moving that forward is to the benefit of kids and families in Tacoma. They've been supporting us now for a few years. Tacoma would also benefit from a Pierce County-wide sales tax. And when you look at, you know, I first and foremost want to take care of kids and families in Tacoma, but when I look at Bethel High School and the same challenges that they have, and they're not connected to a municipality. Bethel just kind of floats out there in the county. And so where we had the advantage of being tied to Tacoma, I wonder what are those school districts going to do, or Eatonville, these smaller school districts that really need that, that one-tenth of one percent in order to provide these mental health services that the Healthy Youth Survey data and other data sources tell us is much needed. So I guess what I'm looking for is if you think that is a good idea, if we then could direct the superintendent to begin to work on a draft letter? I see heads nodding. Are there specific things that you would want to see in the letter? Are there things that we want to do in terms of shaping funding? I know Director Cobb and I had a conversation just that, I trust that the county will do right by the money, but I also think it would be helpful for us as the frontline school district elected representatives to help provide some input. So I'm not putting anybody on the spot, and I see this as an iterative process, but I see the timing, just the, I think we all have a sense of urgency in hearing from the state legislature legislators that this one-tenth of one percent would help. You know, the state doesn't have a lot of money. I think there, it's a, it's a short year. There's nothing likely coming out of the state legislature this year. I don't know when the county would even undertake it, but I think it's an opportunity for this district to provide leadership on an issue that we have identified as a top priority in the district. Superintendent, thoughts on us putting together that letter and then having you circulate it to your colleagues that are superintendents and us to our colleagues that are on boards to see if we can have multiple signatories?
Yeah, I would be, I have a superintendent's meeting set down tomorrow. Be interesting to find out what their, you know, what their thoughts are and what they're thinking. So yeah, it would be great for me to speak with them and kind of bring it up at the meeting and see what they suggest.
Yeah, that would be great. If you reference that the board brought it up, and we certainly, as board members, could then connect with our, you know, I think getting, taking the temperature of the superintendents to see where they are on it, and if they seem supportive, then for us as a board, reaching out to those other school districts. Vice President Cobb?
I think because of where we sit, our priority is always likely going to be kids and the families that they're attached to. But I think it's a general sentiment that I would hope, and general sentiment around how the funds get used if they were to pass the tax, just like in the way that we try to be data-driven, like we make decisions based on need. Like, and I hope, I would hope that kids and families, and I'm sure because of you take care of something over here, there are positive benefits over there, but hope that kids and families surface as an area to focus, but that we use the data that we have and try to continue to think about efficient ways of getting, collecting better data to make these informed decisions, but we really targeted the resources where there's the greatest need, and that there's, to me, a balance of prevention and intervention here because I think, especially as we think about the way, like I just gave the example of being a student in the same district, twenty years ago, like I didn't have the language to talk about mental health. So even just giving you some basic education around what is anxiety, how does it present, what is depression, what does it look like, how can you think about taking care of yourself to prevent baby issues from escalating down the road? So general sentiments that I would hope that we express through the letter is just the urgency and using data to make informed decisions in a balance of prevention and intervention. Those are some things that surface for me.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts on that?
Director Keating? I just have one thought, like in terms of the implementation or getting feedback from our counselors and our psychologists, those that are actually in our schools, and find out, you know, what, what needs are they seeing, what issues are they seeing, and like have real-time information in terms of what are they servicing and how, and what would better support them in the work that they're doing.
Great. And we may be able to learn as well from the city of Tacoma that seems to be working effectively in terms of their one-tenth of one percent. So maybe we can glean something from the language that they've used and the processes that they've used. And also on separate but related to that topic, I was encouraged, you may have heard today, the FCC approved a three-digit suicide prevention hotline. So there's going to be a national nine-eight-eight number, which is going to be directly to the National Suicide Prevention Hotline. So I think those sorts of resources for people that are in crisis is incredibly important, and I was encouraged that they took that action today.
So I had the privilege of taking an AP Psychology class, which is primarily not about mental health, it's about a wide range of psychology things. But I happened to have a substitute teacher due to my teacher being on maternity leave, who was a psychologist, a therapist, and she focused a lot on our mental health. And she talked about mental health in ways that my, my class has spread out to our whole school and has normalized the idea of mental health, anxiety, depression, using those words instead of like what you were talking about. And I think that just that small learning words to put with different feelings that has been normalized, at least like in that classroom, I think really did make a huge difference. And so I think that what you were talking about is really important, and having that experience, I think that is something that we should talk about, so.
Thank you. All right, that moves us to the last item on our agenda. Number eighteen, announcement of future board meetings. This is our last official meeting of the year.
Of the decade.
Of the decade, oh my gosh. Hyperbolic, the decade. Yes, and then it's 2020. I know that a number of us will be at the Foundation for Tacoma Schools Legislative Breakfast in the morning. Hopefully, we are able, staff, students, is able to unplug. I know my kids have been counting the days to the twentieth of December, knowing that they have sixteen days off, so hopefully you all will get to unplug from your rigorous academic life and have some fun. And I hope that you all are able to unplug, and certainly to all of our teachers and staff, that they're able to spend that time with family and loved ones. We will be back here on Thursday, January ninth, 2020, at six PM for our regular business meeting. On Thursday, January sixteenth, is our next scheduled study session. And at last week's study session, we determined that we wanted that topic of, under the health and safety of staff and students category, to be an update on what's happening with mental health services in the district. And I think, you know, as we talk about it, while the need is intense, the good news is there's a lot of work already being done. I think the Comprehensive Life Services presentation at the beginning of the meeting today demonstrates how effective those programs have been. So there is good work going on, and we'll get an update on a more comprehensive look at that on January sixteenth. And then on Thursday, January twenty-third, we will have our second regular business meeting of the month. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? We are adjourned.